Okay. We're actually gonna start one minute early today. Impressive, huh? Anyway, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this June 19th Board of Supervisors meeting to order this time. Glad to have all of you here. If Mr. Slade would do our invitation, I'd appreciate it.
Glad to be here. That's great. I thank you for the day that you've given us today. Thank you for the opportunity that we have to come before you before we begin. Both your presence and your power, your wisdom and your discernment on us here. Father, I pray for these men as they consider the business of the county board that their deliberations, Father, will be helpful. Father, we will remember to think more highly of others than we do of ourselves. Father, thank you for the men and women who fight for calls of freedom and those who protect us. I pray, Father, for their safety. I pray, Father, for their families to sacrifice so much in Christ's name and brand.
Amen. Next, we have public comment and recognition. And I'd like to recognize the fact we have a guest back here is Nita Gaines, the wife of Supervisor Steve Gaines. Blessed us with her presence today. So with all that, Brian and Patford, Brian Graffitham and Patford EMS, you can follow that. Thank you. Good morning, y'all.
Good morning.
I think Nita had a complaint on her county road that she lives on.
Well, I would advise her to take it up with her supervisor.
Just while she's here, she's not getting anywhere with that.
Good morning. Just wanted to come before y'all. Couple of weeks ago was the anniversary of Patford EMS coming to Rankin County and helping us with our ambulance problem. And I just wanted to report that everything is going very well. We're proud to have them. They work really well with us. We work really well with them. We haven't had any complaints that went without correction. Everything's been really good on that part. I'm gonna let him give you the numbers and everything in just a minute. Just an update for those of you, just a reminder, we get MSOF money, which is state grant money every year, the county does. And last year, we were a little bit delayed in getting our money back, which kind of pushed us really close to the deadline. So we were all scrambling. I'm sure all y'all remember that and everything. But I'm happy to report this year, we've already got the ball rolling. We've actually already got some equipment that they requested in. We'll be going on some of the trucks here pretty soon. So the ball is rolling and everything's going good on that. Freddie.
Thank you, Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll give you guys one of the sheets. This is an example of what we're sending to the county, the fire chiefs throughout the area. This is a monthly log from May.
Let me have a hold there.
So on that report, that's the report from the month of May. These are given out daily to the fire departments, to fire chiefs, to the EOC guys. They're receiving these reports daily as well as monthly at the end of the month. So this shows for the month of May, just to run down this for you. Priority one calls are lights and sirens calls. Say, 974 calls in the county during the month of May with an average response time of 11 minutes and 12 seconds. So that includes everything inside the county, county line to county line, and these are unaudited. There's no exceptions taken out of this. That's raw data. Priority two calls, no lights and sirens, maybe a lesser acuity complaint. Those calls were answered in an average of 14 minutes and 8 seconds. One thing that I'm really excited about is, one of the issues that I know we were having in the county here was calls coming out of the hospitals that were going hospital to hospital. So the priority three and four calls, 60 of those calls, those are the calls that may be somebody having a heart attack at the hospital locally, need to go to Jackson. Those calls are being answered in an average of 11 minutes and 31 seconds. Those patients are being answered and then on their way to definitive care. So the average response time all the way around for the month of May, 11 minutes and 44 seconds. For the year, for the year, a total of 18,516 calls were received. Out of that, we transported 12,958 patients during the year. And the average response time for a priority one call for the period of a year was 10 minutes and 27 seconds. And that, like I said, again, that's county line to county line. No exceptions are taken out in that. That is raw data.
That's awesome. Good job, guys.
So we're excited about that. As far as staffing goes, just to give you all a reminder, we're staffing ambulances, two in Brandon, two in Pearl, two in Flowood, one north, one south, and then one ambulance stays south in Florence. And then Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., we upstaff with one extra ambulance. So Rankin County has eight ambulances for the county, Monday through Friday, and then we drop down to seven at night and then seven over the weekend. So that's your current staffing level right now. Like I said, for the year, I'm extremely excited about that number that we're providing. And again, like I said, that's an unaudited number. Any questions any of you gentlemen might have?
I just want to thank you very much because I know the call volumes are there and that's a huge time cut there, especially unaudited numbers. You know, no exceptions on delays, roads, none of that kind of stuff. So that's incredibly impressive number. No complaints in my area whatsoever, so I really appreciate you.
No news is good news.
Are there some weather impact? There's no weather?
I mean, there's some weather impact in there, but they're not, but we're not cutting them out. No, sure. That's the thing, if we went back and...
That's the big thing. You could probably go back and audit that number.
That's the thing, I could go back and audit the numbers and make it look a little better.
But that's just straight raw data. So that's, and that's kind of where we were at, that 12,000, 13,000 transport number. That was another, we were all debating, we didn't know what it was. But 12,000, and that was high. I thought it was gonna be around 11, so that's even better.
And we still have a rather high dry run rate in the county. And when I say dry run, I mean, calls that we go, we don't transport anybody, obviously between 18,000 and 12,000. That's a significant number of dry runs that we're getting. So calls that were canceled on, calls that we get there and then the patient or whoever called decided they don't want to go to the hospital, car wrecks, somebody saw it, called in, there might be injuries, we get there and we don't transport anybody. So the dry run percentage is pretty high for the county.
But those, those really is, is really not much way to correct that because you got an accident.
Sure. I mean, that's right. You have to go.
Or you think someone's having a heart attack, really not. Yeah.
You said that total initial 911 calls, 18,000 or so, didn't you?
18,516.
So 6,000 calls are refused at the scene.
I mean, that sounds like a lot to me.
That is a lot.
That's a lot of calls, you know, we put our, you know, we're spending resources and time, you know, there's no transport involved.
But like I said, there's no way...
No way to get around.
I mean, if it is, give us a suggestion of how we could help there and I don't...
Just pointing out that, you know, the dry run rate.
Right.
But like you said, there's no way to get around that, so.
Well, no, I appreciate, and I think the whole board will agree. You know, when we don't get phone calls and we don't hear the complaints, it means you're doing, must be doing a pretty good job. So we appreciate what you're doing.
You've got many fire departments in Rankin County under your umbrella and nobody's in here fussing or complaining or calling us.
Right.
It's an incredible job.
Right.
Absolutely incredible.
It's worked out well with you, with your station there in Florence. I think that's, I mean, that's been a real answer for a lot of problems we've had.
Sure.
Everywhere else you are too, but other than the Florence area particularly. Anyway, appreciate it. Thank you.
And real quick, I just wanted to take a moment. I want to introduce Curtis Wildon.
Yeah, please.
Curtis is our operations manager for Rankin County. He's kind of the CEO of Rankin County for Patford. Curtis lives in the Pocket area, has been a first responder here, paramedic for a number of years with the county and the fire department down there as well, so.
First-class guy. Thank you, Curtis.
Right.
Hey, Brian, I just want to say one thing also to you. Thank you for, thank you for working with those guys and getting that transfer going. Anytime changes from ambulance service to ambulance service, transition's not easy. Thanks for it. Thank you for that.
I appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Carl Franco of JH Architects. Talked about Mr. Manager Facility.
Talking about courthouse, too.
Yeah, I figured it all together.
Give y'all an update.
Yeah. Right now, it's muddy.
It is muddy.
Thank you.
He's passed. Yeah, I just wanted to give y'all an update on both projects, beginning with the courthouse. They've been working a little over a month. Everything at this point's going extremely well. As you can see, it's all dirt moving. And a lot of dirt's been moving across the street and that's going well also. We were pleasantly surprised in that once they got into digging and that most of the dirt was good. You can see it's a lot of, it's red clay and sandy clay. So they're just about done with the rough grading. They should finish that this week, depending on the weather. They did run into one, one area of bad soil that they're mitigating right now. It's not a large area, but we anticipate there may be some of that. So we do have a contingency allowance in the project to handle that. At this point, we don't, we don't know. Once they finish the preliminary dirt work, they're gonna start test pilings this week, which means they'll be putting down some piling, initial piling, and they have to do tests on it to make sure that all works. And once that's done, then they'll actually start pulling some pilings, hopefully next week on that. One thing you'll notice in the project, there's a project sign that should be going up shortly. They should be finished with that, just listing what the project is and things of that nature. We have not received any pay applications. I guess they're working for free right now, but we do anticipate getting one toward the end of this month on that. There will be a change order coming shortly. Normally, change orders are associated with negative, but this will be a positive one, hopefully. We have, I think we mentioned before, we were looking at revising some of the retaining walls and there should be a reduction of credit to the county in that. So we should be getting that in the next week or so. Everything seems to be running smooth, even though the contractor right at this point doesn't have an official building permit. He has a temporary permit. We thought we had all that resolved with the city. There is one little thing that they've asked us to do some more calculations on. I'm gonna let Tim maybe address that a minute if you want to talk about that.
Yeah. Basically, what the city, almost one of the things to get the building permit, we have to meet their stormwater ordinance. And we provided them with the calculations and felt like we had met the worst-case scenario for the ordinance, but they've asked for some additional calculations, couple hours' time, not any big deal. And we're trying to work that out with them actually this morning to make sure we get the right calculations done to satisfy them. It's just, basically, it involves the detention ponds on the misdemeanor site because it's now handling the courthouse, too. And there were some changes there. We resubmitted the calculations, but they wanted just some additional information on it.
We don't anticipate this being an issue at all, but we just, you know, sometimes rumors get out there and we wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, so if anybody asks you about it. So just in summary, you know, a month, six weeks in, everything's going as well, if not a little bit better than we anticipated with the dirt work. So we'll keep you going on that. Do you have any questions on the courthouse project at this point?
What about signage out front? Tell them what it is?
It's an eight-by-eight sign. It has a colored rendering on it, has the name of the supervisors and just says, "A new courthouse." And I can't remember if it has a completion date on that, projected completion date. But we just felt like it's always important on these projects for the citizens and other tax dollars that work, that it's not, you know, that there's something coming up. They obviously see a big hole in the ground, but, you know, one of, it's got a picture of what the building's gonna look like and things of that nature.
Yeah, I was asked the other day where it was going. I started explaining, oh, so where all that digging is, that's where it is. That's it.
Well, you can see, as we discussed throughout the site costs, but you can see the dramatic hole and the amount of dirt that's been moved.
Right.
Now, again, the positive thing is, the county got a great deal on that dirt going over to the misdemeanor.
Sure.
I mean, just a super deal.
Good dirt, too.
And, yes. As far as the misdemeanor facility, we've had several meetings with the sheriff and his deputies, and most recently about a week ago, we've revised the design a little bit based on their comments. We're moving along. Because of the amount of dirt going from courthouse project to the misdemeanor project, there's about 20 feet of fill. So the geotech engineer has, is testing it and has been testing as it's been put in, but he's gonna be testing it once they get through for settlement for two weeks. And because of the large amount of dirt, we anticipate that it may have to sit there anywhere from a month to 90 days to allow all that settlement to go. But that really does tell with us finishing the drawings, that's about when we're gonna finish the drawing. So what they want to do is, they just want to make sure it settles completely so that we don't have any building movement once we start constructing a foundation on it. So where we're at right now, we anticipate finishing the design construction documents in August, receiving bids in September and starting the foundation work, or any finished grading in October, which will be the dry part of the year. We anticipate substantial completion around January of 2018, which is basically in similar time when the courthouse will be built. So both of those projects hopefully will come online about that time. As far as construction costs, we actually have updated our costs a little bit and it's actually, at this point, a little bit better news than originally thinking. I anticipate on the cost of the building's about $4 million. It's gonna house, it's 15,000 square feet, gonna house approximately 150 inmates, which is a little bit more than what we originally started with, almost 20, I think. Site work, we've estimated about $300,000. The dirt work, which is a part coming from the courthouse over there, we anticipate about $100,000. So, you know, normally it'd be two, three, four times that amount, so that's, that's a good deal. That's the main building. There's also a 30-by-50 storage facility, which is about $200,000. So that's about 4.6 million. We're, we're carrying a $400,000 contingency we hope, don't think we'll need, but that kind of rounds out a $5 million budget and, you know, we'll continue to monitor that and see if there's any cost savings. But that's where we're at with both of those projects right now. So far, everything seems to be running smoothly. There will be issues that come up on some of these projects, they're as complex as they are, but we'll keep y'all posted and we will be coming before you as soon as the contractor submits a pay application.
I got a probably, I mean, probably dumb question, but you're talking about, I mean, they are, when they're putting this dirt over there, I mean, they're, it's all being compacted.
It is being compacted.
With the proper equipment.
Right. It is being, and it's being tested.
Oh, yeah.
And, and what we're, what is basically gonna be the rough grading finish. We're still, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but once they get with that, y'all can go back over there and run a survey, I think, in that way. So that survey, we give, we bid the project, accurate cost for the contractors to do that, and then it'll just be finished grading on that point.
All right.
Any questions on that?
Sounds like good news. Everything's moving forward. A long time coming. Thank you, Carl. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Anybody, no other question? All right. Next, we have Amelia Wright, which I don't know if she's here or not. No? She's not here.
Have you heard from her?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll move on to old business. I have a motion to approve, Menison.
Subway.
Motion to approve, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Consent agenda.
Subway.
Motion to approve, Mr. Morrow. Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Well, we have Bob Wedgeworth right here, emergency manager.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have submitted the request from the 172nd Air Wing Mercy Management to be added on to our call list, on to our radio system, so that would enhance our communication, both for them to have an event on the base and if there's an event off the base, so we can communicate with each other. And this would tie in the municipalities that surround it as well as the county.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to do that. It's a good idea, Bob.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Cross. Second, Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Mr. John Sullivan.
Real quick, Bob. Bob, real quick. We're still moving forward on the Forester Commission and that kind of thing and...
I'm waiting on the, waiting on some sizes from the road manager. And we have actually acquired some, a really good deal on some equipment from surplus property.
Great.
That we've moved forward. I've also secured a donation that should be finalized at the eventful board meeting in the city of Richmond. Be my last board meeting this Tuesday night, where they have, some of their seized vehicles that the policemen have seized. I went down with the road manager and we found a truck that we think is also gonna add some benefit to us. We're gonna have to put a bed on it, but save the cost of a truck, so about $150,000 savings there. So we're, we're moving forward as, as fast as we can. The only thing that's really holding Mike and I up is the speed of bureaucracy. You know, once you hit that, you know, wall of red tape, that stops us and then, you know, we're trying to pick our way around it, so.
I think that's Mr. Slade's fault, isn't it, Mr. Slade?
I would accept.
There you go.
All right, John.
Hey, this morning.
Any better than I couldn't stand it. Usual two items, petition to change the assessment of 2016 real and personal property assessment row.
Subway.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Morrow. Second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
And add a bid petition to adjust 2016 home state exemption.
Subway.
Motion to approve, Mr. Morrow. Second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Bridgette Harry. Good morning.
Our first bid opening we had this morning is for the semi-anual asphalt. There is a bid worksheet in there, packet for that. First bid we had this morning is from APAC. First, it's item four is the first bid on this one. FOB base, $49 a ton. Item five, $57 per ton. Plant mix base, FOB, $48 a ton. Then item seven, $54 a ton. And this is out of their Canton site. This one is also from APAC. This is their Jackson plant. Item one, 301A basin place, $75 a ton. Item two, surface, $79 a ton. Item three, cold milling per square yard, $3. Item four, $49. Item five, $56 a ton. Item six, $48. And item seven, $53. This bid is from Dickerson &amp; Bowen. Item one, $84 a ton. Item two, $79. Item three, is that $2.80?
It looks like $2.80.
Item four, $51. Item five, $53. Item six, $50. Item seven...
What was that, $50?
$50 even, yes. Item six. This bid is from W.E. Blain and Sons. Item one, $72.50. Item two, $77.50. No bid on item three. Item four, $50. Item five, $55. Item six, $48. Item seven is $53. This bid is from AdCamp. Item one, $70. Item two, $72. Item three, $2.50. Item four, $49. Item five, $52. Item six, $48. This bid is from Ergon. This'll be on the second page of the sheet. It's item eight, CRS2, $1.33 per gallon. Item nine, CRS2P, $1.60 per gallon. Item two, I mean, 10, excuse me, CAEP, $2.90 per gallon. And item 11, Fogseal, $1.83 per gallon. This bid is from Blackledge Emulsions. Also for the liquid asphalt on page two. Item eight, CRS2, $1.39 per gallon. And item nine, $1.65 per gallon. Recommend those be taken under advisement.
Subway.
Second.
Motion to take these under advisement by Mr. Morrow. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
Hey, Chair, just a reminder, if this comes back up, next meeting or something like that, it'll come back up, we'll vote to accept or...
Well, after they review it all.
Yeah, it comes back to it, so.
Right.
Vote to approve.
Yeah. It just goes under advisement.
Yeah, because I want, I got several comments I know I want to make about some of this stuff, but we'll just wait till we break it back up for the bottom and on that.
We'll have it on the July 5th agenda for, to be awarded.
Thank you, Ms. Bridget.
The next bids are for the semi-anual supplies. The first item is for gravel. And Daniel, Mike said, you like, you wanted all these read out? Do you still want all of them or do you...
How many you got?
We have a bunch, but every item, it takes a good while.
I don't need every one of them.
Okay, just read them and acknowledge it and then we'll...
Yeah. Look at it, right?
It goes under advisement also.
I can see all the details after this.
You can come to my office and then we'll have the bid tabs with the recommendations.
Great, that's fine.
First bid for gravel is from Warren Paving. They bid on number, the limestone and the riprap. Second bid is from Miller Materials, the same, the limestone and the riprap. This bid is from White Sands. They bid on, in addition to the limestone and riprap, they also bid on the washed pea and clay gravel. The next bid is for concrete bridge components. We received one bid from Foley Products Company. The next item is bridge installation. One bid was received from S&amp;S Dragline. The next bids are for metal culverts. The first bid received is from G&amp;O Supply Company Incorporated. This bid is from Southern Pipe and Supply. The next bids are for concrete culverts. We sound like a bunch of mice over here rattling around. The first bid is from G&amp;O Supply. The next bid is from Foley Products Company. This bid is from Design Precast and Pipe. The next bids are for the polyethylene culverts. The first bid received is from G&amp;O Supply. Sorry. Keep hitting that mic. Second bid is from Southern Pipe and Supply. The next bid is for traffic striping. One bid was received from Traffic Control Products.
Only one?
We're about to run out of sources.
Robbie Robinson, I think, went out of business in Lane Line. I'm not sure why they did the bid this time.
I was hoping we might get a couple of them.
I know.
The next bid for soil stabilization. One bid was received from Adcamp. The next bid is for, um, is for polyurethane fat foam. One bid was received from Bulldog Construction. The next item is concrete curb and gutter removal and replacement. This bid is from HR Squared.
Does it mean that it just seemed like a whole lot more than usual?
He added four more items this time for the concrete, this, what we're reading now in pavement markers, so it's taking a little bit longer. This item, this is, that's Jay, isn't it? Okay, I'm sorry. This bid is from Bulldog Construction for that same item. I don't know my ABCs this morning.
We talked about having just a bid out, just a straight concrete crew. Go straight out and fix some of those things, they think the work crews off, the curb stuff.
This item... This is for concrete sidewalk removal and replacement. The first bid is from HR Squared.
And we've, we got some areas that need to be sent that contracted crew over and fix it, not have to take a road crew, as we choose. Am I really having...
This bid is from Bulldog Construction.
Well, I hope you enjoyed your short visit. Thank you, Governor.
We'll get somebody out there to look at your roads now.
She sure was nice, you know?
This bid is from Ronnie Williamson Construction.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. I tell you what, though, she get you on the phone.
The next item is for raised pavement markers. One bid was received from Traffic Control Products. The last item is for asphalt leveling and patching. One bid was received from AJ Construction. I recommend those be taken under advisement.
Subpoor.
Most takes these under advisement by Mr. Cross. Daniel Cross, who did the, made the most?
I did.
Most of them, Mr. Morris, second Mr. Cross, any discussion? All favors say aye, all opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, you don't have to move too far. Yeah, exactly. You're up front and center. Though while these, uh, they're adjusting that, I want to, uh, uh, make a comment and thank you. We had, um, I know District One had tremendous wind damage. It was like a big wave of wind came through crazy Friday night. But, uh, I want to commend and compliment Mike and his crews for what they did to the whole community. There wasn't, I don't think there was a road in, um, the more southern rural area that was passable that night. And power lines, I was out of power myself for thirty-nine hours. Trees were everywhere. But anyway, I just want to commend them and his crew and staff, everybody from working and getting this opened and, um, the night time and just, again. The sad thing is, we just went through this about two weeks ago in the same area, but not nearly as, as widespread and as bad. But I just want to thank you and thank you, make sure you thank the, the men for what all y'all have done. The thing is, they're not even through, they just got them cut out of the road. Now we got to clean it up. So we have a real mess there. But, uh, anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir, appreciate it. Uh, we do, we, we got a bunch cleaning up to do, so work order's going to kind of climb up a little bit for next week or so. When we get all this picked up. Good bid in your District One and good bid in south end of District Three right now. Everything else is kind of scattered what we got.
You know, I didn't realize until I got, uh, my daughter-in-law's, um, parents live south, I mean, down around, uh, Shivers. It looks like they got, um, I think they had something like fifty trees in the surrounding area right there where they live. It looked like a wood yard down there. But, uh, it, it, it went a long way, so.
And I reckon while, when we talk about that now. While we're talking about this, uh, Simpson County's already called and sent in a request. You know, if we got caught up, if they could use a crew or two here and there to, uh, help, they've got extensive damage.
Right.
Probably a little worse than us, I went through there yesterday.
I didn't, I didn't bring that up, but they, yeah, they got hit. I just, it just, I, it was such a wide span.
Yeah, it was, it was just, it was, it was pretty wide, I think it was just straight line wind.
Yeah, I know, like two miles wide, it just like swept the whole thing. Out of the north, you would think trees, uh, you, it's kind of, our trees are more, uh, root system is developed more for the south wind. This north wind took...
And then the rain, the ground wet, so it just impacted it.
I pulled a tree out of a man's house, he got a hole about, bigger, bigger enough basketball limb, about four feet, uh, about four feet of it came out of the house. So, anyway, go ahead, I just want to thank you for what all you did.
Yeah, I, I had that, and then I've got the, uh, state aid deal with the mailboxes. I reckon we've had our letter out. Kind of after we get through cleaning up some of this, I reckon we're going to kind of start knocking on doors and easing into that.
Well, I noticed they have on, uh, White Road, I rode it, there's a lot of them have, have moved theirs, but there's...
A lot that has...
Some that just like, and I'm going to speak to a couple of them myself.
Well, I, I was going to say, I'm going to talk to people before we just start.
Right. So we have had some, uh, response, participation in taking it on their own.
Right.
But I'm going to talk to some of them.
Because I don't know how far we are, but we're probably getting closer by the day that we're going to have to get this done. So, some point is, just kind of want to let y'all know in case y'all start getting calls about, on that.
I have a motion to add to the agenda. Motion to add this to the agenda by Mr. Morris, second Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Our motion approved.
Motion approved.
Most approved, Mr. Morris, second, Mr. Bishop. All favors say aye, all opposed? Hey, Mike, is, um, is, is this the time we need to, or have you got it handled? We got, from, because we had this last storm about three weeks ago, we got a mound of, uh, rubbish debris. That's, uh, half size this building where they cleaned up and had to pile it. We got that, that much more, at least that much or more, I'd say more on the ground now.
I would say it's going to be probably triple in size if we make it through with it.
Yeah. So, in that, is this something that, anything that needs to be discussed?
We had done, well, we had left on me, we had done a PO for that.
Okay.
On the last that I had, and this is a great question. I'm going to have to get them back down there.
What we're talking about doing rather than that, just so y'all know, is, is, um...
They're trying to haul all this debris back to Brandon, we're staging it.
Coming and chip it right there.
Chip it.
And then they would dispose of it. I mean, it's, uh, seriously, it's half size this building now. And, uh, not only, I mean, you got people cleaning up, doing it on their own, um, but it really, it's, if you've rode the roads, it's, it's amazing. About nine o'clock. Right. Right. Right, well, that's what I wanted to spring it out. Right, okay.
I think we're...
Well, you'll be working, then working with, uh, Greg Bridgette, I just wanted to bring that out. It'd be something you may be coming to bring back to us.
Yeah, I, I'm going to get with Greg, because I think what we're going to end up having to do is professional service type deals.
Okay, all right.
Let me ask one thing, Mike, also, at the reservoir, after the flooding we had, we brought in those dumpsters that are still out there. I think we're to a point with debris, home removal debris stuff that we were cleaning up. And you may have already done this, as far as get those dumpsters out of there. And then we got those, kind of over there off, uh, uh, Glen's View area and that same side. But we got those two dumpsters that we used and they were a huge help. I know we brought those extra ones in, you know, for the debris. I think we're about to the point, we could probably remove those, I mean, if you them somewhere else.
Yeah, we're...
And they may be, I just hadn't seen them, I hadn't seen them in about a week or two. Okay, yeah, okay. But I, I think everything else now that, I mean, you still got people that are cleaning out homes, but it's a case by case, it's a very small number now, I don't think we need to...
Right, what we've been doing with that is just picking it up, bringing it back to Marquette down here.
And you may have already removed them, I just saw them about a week or so ago, and it hit me when you were mentioning that debris stuff, so.
All right, Mr. Parker.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Ms. Fortenberry, I didn't see you on here, would you like to, you want to add something? We thought maybe you, you had something you need to add to the agenda. Well, we'll be here a few more minutes. All right. Mr. Parker.
Thank you, sir. Have two items on the agenda. The first item is, uh, approval of memorandum of understanding between the Board of Supervisors and the Department of Transportation for Spelway Road and North Shore Park. Way riding it, widening project.
Hey, I'm, I'm good with that, let me ask you one question. We got an email, maybe it was last week sometime regarding that, I guess, the old Fannin project?
Yeah.
Was that all straight?
I shared it with everybody, we all got it.
Yeah, is that all straight?
I mean, I don't know, it's the first I've heard about it. It's not straight yet.
But y'all got, y'all on top of it, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I, I didn't want that to hang up, this project here.
I understand.
I guess that's what that whole email was about, right?
That's, yes, about in the future.
But you feel like you got that under, you got that under control, you ready to roll it?
Yes, sir. We feel like we do, keep in mind, we're dealing with M.D.O.
I understand.
That's all I'll say.
All right, I'll make that motion approved.
Most approved, Mr. Cross, second Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All favors say aye, all opposed?
Thank you, second item on the, on the agenda is our Woodlands curb repair. Recommend approval of pay request number two to Bulldog Construction Company in the amount of forty-eight thousand, five ninety-nine, forty.
Hey, let me ask one thing on that, though. Mike, we're not done, are we? Hey, we got to get them on Boxwood Cove in that back corner, right?
Yeah, they're not, they're not done.
I, I wouldn't pay it till right now. What, Mike, what do you think?
Well, this is the final payment? Oh, this is number two, I mean, how many is that?
This was an additional, wasn't it, Mike, this, the extra forty-something thousand we put in to fix other areas, that's not done yet? Right?
It is done.
No, it's not done.
Well, when you say pay request number two, I, I mean, is this like a draw, or they got another coming?
Yes, sir.
Well, you wouldn't hold them up on this?
They got another draw coming? Mike?
It's not fine.
This is not the final payment.
I guess my thing is, Mike, if we can't get them over there to Boxwood Cove to fix this stuff, you tell me what you want to do on that? What do you think?
I mean, if...
What I say, let's put it off.
Well, my, my guess, what I'm saying, though, do they, we already, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at it from contractor's view. Is this pay request number two, have they done that work, though? That's what I'm getting at.
No.
And why, why, why would, they requested it, they hadn't done it?
I mean, they've gotten in there and done some stuff on it, but they hadn't finished it. This was, this was the extra, this was the extra stuff we came back in. That went inside of it to get that Boxwood Cove area and then that Woodland Circle area, too. I think they got the Woodland Circle part, but they hadn't got the Boxwood Cove side, so.
Is it, is it figured in the same, is this money covering Boxwood Cove? Or you don't think it does?
No, so this is for work that's actually been done.
Well, if this is for actually been done, not quite right, hold the money up.
How much the time looks, do you know? Mr. Bush, do you know?
No, I don't know, I was trying to... It'd be enough to get their attention.
That's all I'm saying, if this, this is work that he's already done, it's not quite right for us to hold the money up if he's already done the work.
Well, I mean, I, I guess my thing is...
But you can't get him back out there to finish it, though.
I can't get him back out there, I've been going on a month, and my phone explodes over it, so.
What is the situation, I mean, I guess?
We got an area back in the bottom of Boxwood Cove, we came in to the change order request to build back up before we finished all the curb stuff in that area. So we went on and paved it already, but we've got to fix that. It's a low lying area where all the water is just hanging right there on that same side. So we did a change order two months ago, Mike, maybe three months ago, whenever this thing was going on. Got it approved and to come in and do Boxwood Cove. Now we can't get them to go back out there, so.
That's one, yeah, but still, I'm confused, if they've done the work that this would cover...
How much have we already paid them?
We can't hold that money. It'd be kind of like order truck. I mean, I, I don't know if this, that's, that's my only thing from contractor's side, if he's done, this is only covering the work that he's done. It's not fair to hold this money if the other work is coming out of other money, is what I'm getting at.
Well, I, I guess that's what I want to be sure we're clear on, but this money right here has nothing to do with the Boxwood Cove change order work.
That's what, that's what I'm asking. Yep.
Do you think it is money? What do you think? You don't think this is the Boxwood Cove? Because I know that was additional forty-something thousand, the reason that's why I'm thinking it stays.
Our orig...
Go ahead, you're right.
Our, our original contract was a hundred and five thousand, forty-three dollars and fifty cents. The net of the change orders as of, as of this estimate was forty thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars.
Okay.
And, uh, that brought the current price, the contract price, up to a hundred and forty-five thousand, six eighty-eight, fifty.
Okay.
And, uh... I guess that's the only thing you've been...
Do we show how much we paid them?
Uh, yes. Let's see, the amount eligible for payment now is a hundred and forty thousand, two sixty-six, eighty-three. The previous payments, what you're listing, previous payments.
Yes, sir.
Ninety-one thousand, six sixty-seven, forty-four.
Ooh, he's right at the end of it then.
So that's going to tell you, this is the last forty-eight thousand to the change order side. The original bid was a hundred and something.
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five. Paying ninety-one thousand. I give you forty-eight thousand, you're not...
Two thousand, I think you have it.
What, what his estimate is showing, uh, is the balance to finish the project plus the retainage is five thousand, four twenty-one, sixty-seven.
Well, that's not going to be enough.
Exactly right.
Yeah, we'll get him back.
No, I wouldn't do that then either.
Right.
If they only got five thousand left out there now, we just need to hold up. That's what I'm trying to get out, trying to get clear, because it wasn't fair if it's what he's already paid.
Right, that's why I thought this money was not going to give.
So, I'm going to have to, I agree.
So, here's, here's what I'd like to do.
Never get it back to five thousand dollars.
I would like to, what I'd like to do here is table this thing until the work session or something that night. Mike?
Sure.
Hey, we, we're going to table this thing until the next meeting and see if we can get out there in the next two weeks and finish this up for forty-eight thousand dollars. Remind them where Boxwood Cove is, it's in the Woodland, second right. Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, now, next we have Mr. Slate, and he has a list. He has to bring our lunch for this one.
Ms. Oster is going to be keeping our time today, Mr. Slate.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, Ms. Oster, I'm sorry.
The, uh, first three items under my section are to set public hearings, they appear to be nuisance properties, and you can see them listed here. We just need one motion to set all those for two twenty-nine.
Motion to set these public hearings, Mr. Morris, second Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All favors say aye, all opposed?
So it's clear those were, that's items A, B, and C under my section. The next item, item D, is a public hearing on the Greg and Mallory Bonds conditional use permit at one sixty-five Fannin Landing Circle, District Two. Uh, Greg and Mallory Bonds are seeking a conditional use permit to construct a second dwelling for an in-law suite and pool house at one sixty-five Fannin Landing Circle. It's a four-point, eight-three acre parcel, zoned RE one, that's in District Two. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Greg and Mallory Bonds conditional use permit. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. Bonds is here, if the board has any questions, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter. So if you have any questions, you can ask those now, otherwise it'd be appropriate to take action.
I suppose Mr. Bonds, I think it's a fine setup, he's got about a five acre, uh, plan out there, so we'll recommend approval.
Okay. Most approved, Mr. Cross, second Mr. Ga, uh, Gaines, all favors say aye, all opposed?
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Oster's where we need to bring our lunch.
I'll make it quick. First item I have this morning is acknowledgement of the receipt of some insurance proceeds that we've received from FCCI for a maintenance truck that was damaged. And authority for, uh, me to make settlement to Rogers Dab Chevrolet for the repairs in the amount of five thousand, six hundred, twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
So, move. One second. Whatever. Motion approved, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
The next item is discussion and possible action to issue an RFP for energy service companies to provide a energy, uh, and conservation equipment and services contract through qualified, through the MDA Energy, uh, Division. We've been approached by a company that, what they do is come in, we'd have to put out an RFP for this. Um, it works in conju, conjunction with MDA. They come in and they assess all of our, uh, utilities in the way of our energy, uh, including HVAC, our lights, um, you know, we've already started getting quotes for changing out lights at the multipurpose to the, um, energy efficient, the LED lights. Uh, we could do it in conjunction with that. They come in and do a complete assessment. When they do this assessment, if we go with them and how we change out like our units, our air conditioning units and all, the savings that we are supposed to get from the changing of the lights and the units as they're needing to be changed is supposed to fund any payments that we would have to make on the equipment. If we choose not to, uh, go out and get a lease purchase on the equipment, we pay for it ourselves, we're still, would reap the benefits of the energy savings. But we do have to do this through an RFP, take proposals, score them, in order for a company to come in and do this.
So, move.
Yep, second.
All right, motion approved, Mr. Morris, second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
All right. The next item I have, um, is acknowledgement of a re, receipt of a request from the circuit clerk to install security cameras, uh, in her office. And, um, these cameras she would purchase herself through her funds, and it would be not to exceed five thousand dollars.
She been having problems, or just kinda-
Yeah, I'm getting curious, what's she need, why she, what are they afraid of?
She did not tell me what her question was. She did, we did ask the sheriff about it, and he said that he didn't have a problem with it since he's basically, you know, over the buildings and grounds. She's gonna pay for it out of her funds, and he just suggested we use the same kinda cameras that they do so that when we have to go on a, um, service plan, that it would be all in, all-inclusive. She did not tell me why that she wanted it.
I would do that myself if they had some, uh- So, move.
Yep, second.
All right, motion approved, Mr. Morris, second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
The next, uh, item is action to correct the minutes of March thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen work session, section eight, a subsection B to reflect motion to add authority to issue emergency purchase order for the repair or replacement of the generator located at the Rankin County Jail and to rent one. What happened was somehow in the minutes, it got in as the multipurpose facility instead of the jail where we had the problem with the generator. So, we need, um, to correct those minutes.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morris, second, Mr. Bishop.
Hey, just, are we written one?
No, we're-
We're not written it, actually.
Right. We paid the first month after that. We have gotten a cost back in on it. I'm sorry, I cannot remember the amount. Johnny gave it to me several days ago, and we've issued a PO. They are giving us credit for that month that we rented it.
Okay. But we're not still paying ten thousand one?
No, no, we're not.
We talked about that thing.
We, right. We never paid but the one and the ninety-eight, and they're giving us credit for that.
Okay, thank you.
The next one-
Well, I had a motion, second.
I'm sorry.
All favors, aye? Aye. Oppose?
The next one, um, follow suit to that, is a correction to, um, for the emergency repair order, um, of the generator located at the jail at a cost. So, it is just basically the emergency order and the rental order.
So, move. Say, motion approved, Mr. Morris, second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion?
Yeah, I wanna ask you a question. Why do we pay all this maintenance if we, I mean, if we're not getting it, we're gonna pay two thousand dollars for repair on something we're paying maintenance on?
This one had more problems than just repair could handle. I mean, this one, something happened, they thought metal pieces got into part of the workings, they had to take it apart. It's a, um, what brand was it?
Sheriff, what brand was that?
Yeah, but it, what, the generator that we had the problems with?
The Bron?
No, yeah, the brand. It was under-
I think it is Taylor.
It's under Taylor, but it was-
Mitsubishi, was it a Mitsubishi?
Mitsubishi. I believe it was a Mitsubishi. And, and it was the motor itself.
Yeah.
And so, they worked with us, like, they let us have one to rent. We paid the ninety-eight hundred the first time.
Right.
They did not charge us rent any other time. They're giving us credit back on that, because Mitsubishi itself had to take it, take it apart, see what the problem was.
So, I-
It was out of warranty on the, the age, but the number of hours on it was so low, that's why the company had to get involved in all.
Metal in it is internal.
This is over and above regular maintenance, what a metal maintenance contract would cover. This is a total fault of the engine.
Right. It has some kinda failure, some kinda metal pieces got into it.
Word. It's my understanding.
Yes, that's what I understand.
Through the rod.
If it had metal in the motor, in the oil, it was internal.
Yes, sir.
It defective. All right. So, move. All right, motion second. All favors, aye? Oppose? Okay.
The next item is authority to pay JH and H Architects planners for, uh, number seventeen dash zero one four two on the schematic design in the amount of five, fifty-two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for the misdemeanor facility and authority to issue that check.
So, move. Motion approved, Mr. Morris.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
The next item is authority to use Verizon for the data transmission of election results for the November two thousand and seventeen constable election. We'll use ten machines and modems at that time.
So, move.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Morris, second, Mr. Bishop. All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Are we going ahead and ordering all of them, or are we?
No, we're using ten to see how this run works, because we won't have another major election test for a while.
Need additional business to be discussed.
I have a quick question for Sheriff. Brian, where are you on your capacity? I noticed we bumped up the misdemeanor to a hundred and fifty people now. Where are you just on your average capacity in the jail right now? What is, what is the, whoops. What is the legal capacity?
Maybe we should go into executive session.
Five hundred.
Now, what we're doing is, is we have a relationship with, uh, M.D.O.C. So, we have about twenty-five, a hundred and fifty, so, I don't know. Last night, my check was four seventy-eight.
And that's where it hangs, though, isn't it? Four seventy?